All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order our committee of the whole meeting for September the 3rd. I have 6:00 PM. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people. And moving right along, let's go to approval of the agenda.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Logan. And all in favor? Thank you. Adoption of the minutes, 3.1. Thank you, Counselor Parkinson. And all those in favor? Thank you very much. And moving right along, we have a presentation this evening by the people representing A H L T Holdings. I believe they're present here in the room. And this is with regard to rezoning at 3510 Wishart Road. Come on up. If you can just state your names for the minute taker, please.
I'm Alan Hurley.
I'm Laura Tate.
Thank you.
That's where A H L T Holdings.
I got it.
Very imaginative, isn't it? Yes. Yeah, so, your worship, members of council and staff, thank you for letting us come and talk to you about our project. It's a 12-lot subdivision, hopefully, on Wishart Road. And we just wanted to introduce ourselves. I'm a civil engineer. I've been a consultant for about, civil engineering consultant for about 30 years. Laura is an urban planner who's worked at several different municipalities and most recently has been a lecturer in urban planning at a couple of universities in the States. So...
You can even take it out if you want. It's cordless if you need to get it closer.
All right. Yeah, so, we are not big developers, but we're not inexperienced either. We've done a couple of subdivisions totaling about 55 single-family lots in the Nanaimo area. This is our first one in the capital area. We're living in Victoria now. And we were familiar with the new O C P and the site adaptive planning that Callwood has recently embraced. And we're completely in agreement and onboard with staff that this project should be a poster child for site adaptive planning. It's what we do anyways. It's why we got into doing our own developments as consultants. We worked on other people's projects and always felt, of course, that we could do it better. So, trying to put our money where our mouth is and actually do better subdivisions than some other developers out there. And we're really excited to do this and we're really excited to collaborate with the city staff to make this happen. So, we have a little presentation and I'll pass the mic over to Laura to run through it.
Great. So, I think these discussions are really best when you can ask us questions about where you have concerns or where you just want more information. But we'll quickly show you, this is our site plan, and it provides for three lots along Wishart Road. Roughly a quarter of the land on our site, we plan to set aside for environmentally sensitive areas. So, that's a significant proportion of the site. Then we also have the other nine lots that have access through a newly-built Delora. Again, we're happy to talk about that in more detail as we go forward. We also see three advantages and three things that really count for us in our site adaptive planning approach. The first is building with natural grade, and I'm going to show you a couple of images and examples of that. Then, we also really believe in supporting tree retention. And we know that it's not possible to save every tree as we develop, but through our discussions with staff, who really encouraged us to ground true things before we promised to save so many trees, we've got a draft tree plan. It is draft, so that's why you haven't seen it yet. But we created a revised site plan that really showed us where we could save trees and where it was going to be a little tougher. So, that's what you have in your packages and that will continue to be refined. And of course, our proposal really provides for at least nine of the 12 lots to be custom-built. That's really the way they work the best. So, here's an example of a building with natural grade. This comes from the Broadmead area, where there was, again, a similar kind of effort to work with nature, not blast everything out. Here's another example of where some of the natural features aren't just things that you build on, they're also things that can create barriers without creating a sense of being fenced in. And another example where the natural environment is a feature, it's an amenity. The other thing that we're doing is we actually asked our arborists to tell us what are some of the trees that are really worth saving and that are feasible to save. And so, this is an example of beautiful arbuthus on the property that you see marked. And again, as we mentioned, custom building. Here are some examples in the neighborhood. This is on the existing part of Delora. And, if it will, another part of Delora. Okay. So, just in conclusion, because we are wanting to give you a chance to ask us questions that you have, Al's going to conclude for us.
Okay, yeah, so, basically, we are trying to set ourselves apart as being more thoughtful and, you know, working more with the terrain, with the trees. And we want to make a real subdivision that we can all be proud of. And we want this to be a big win for the city as well as for us. And we've been working really well with the staff so far. One thing that's come up recently that I hope we're going to find out a little bit more about is the need for a traffic study. That was put into the agenda package and we really haven't had much chance to discuss what that might mean or what the terms of reference might be for that. So, we're ardently optimistic about that, but we're curious to see what that terms of reference is actually going to be.
Sorry, there was one more thing we forgot, which is because we feel so strongly about this concept, one of the things that we would like to get your input on tonight is whether, you know, if you see this as a development that is worth proceeding with, whether there might be a benefit in having a workshop with other local area builders on how to make site adaptive planning a reality. We recognize that it's a concept that needs to be implemented, and that means working out some details. So, if you saw an advantage to that, we would certainly be interested and willing to partner with the city on that. So, we just wanted to leave that as food for thought and it can be part of the discussions. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. This is on the agenda for this evening, but is it appropriate to have questions from council just yet? So, if any member of committee has any questions for the developers at this point? Okay, so, we're going to wait until further in the agenda. Thank you. Next is public participation. It's important that the participation pertaining to matters that have, sorry, that comments pertaining to a matter that has been the subject of a public hearing are prohibited where the bylaws related to the matter have not been presented to council for consideration of adoption. So, at this point, if any member of the public has something they would like to share about tonight's agenda items, please step forward to the mic. Don't be shy. If you could just state your name.
Yes, certainly. My name's Georgia DeJarden. I'm with Seacliff Properties. Hello, Mr. Chair, your worship, and members of council and staff. As stated, I'm Georgia DeJarden. I'm with Seacliff Properties, and I'm here with Niall Palteal from Key Corp Planning. We're just here today to briefly speak about the Royal Beach O C P amendment and rezoning proposal that you'll be reviewing shortly on your agenda this evening. I wanted to start by extending a sincere thank you to city staff for all your ongoing efforts with this project. It is a large-scale and rather complicated development, and we really appreciate all your help to date and look forward to continuing and working with you going forward. So, I just thought I'd start with a quick overview of Royal Beach, just for added clarity. So, when we refer to Royal Beach, we're talking about the approximately 130 acres located east of Machosen Road down to the water as part of the larger Royal Bay community. These lands were acquired by Seacliff Properties in late 2017 and is certainly a long-term development project that Seacliff has committed to delivering. The property, in our opinion, represents a once-in-a-generation opportunity to create a vibrant new seaside community in the city of Callwood, providing a diverse range of housing options and a variety of non-residential space defined by its spectacular oceanfront location and ocean view parkland and public realm, largely in keeping with the vision as set out in the 2018 O C P. We've been working closely with a team, a large team of consultants, since acquiring the property in late 2017 to understand the various factors that will be affecting the future development of the property, so we can plan and ultimately develop a resilient community for the future. So, we just thought we'd start with a quick overview of some of the critical items that you'll see in your agenda packages tonight. So, starting with the shoreline erosion, as stated in your staff report, a coastal assessment has been carried out by N H C to establish a worst-case scenario as it relates to potential erosion rates. This is assumed, this coastal assessment has assumed no mitigation measures can be, were employed in the developing of it. However, in the future, there is a potential to reduce those shoreline rescission rates if mitigation measures were explored. With that being said, the shoreline itself actually falls outside of the Royal Beach property line, so at this point in time, we have not factored in any mitigation into the analysis. And just wanted to clarify that while preliminary work has been done to aid in our planning, more in-depth analysis will be required in this regard at the time of development permit and building permit for each phase of the project. As it relates to geotechnical and environmental considerations, we're working closely with both Thurber Geotechnical Engineers and Keystone Environmental to plan for the various geotechnical and environmental considerations of the property. From an environmental perspective, there were two C O Cs issued for the property in 2008 that cover the entirety of the property and permit residential and non-residential development. We are in compliance with all requirements and will continue working with our environmental consultants through the process to ensure compliance moving forward. Just going to pass it along to Niall here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of committee. We've engaged Watts Consulting to go through traffic modeling and planning for the regional growth that we see within the entire area. That's Olympic View, Royal Bay, Royal Beach, ourselves, and other properties like Parsy on the South Victoria Corridor. It's our position, going into this project, that the proponents, the developers in the area, should be paying 100% of the upgrades that pertain to the impact that they have on the community. And that's why we are in support of the city's efforts in preparation of a upcoming D C C Development Cost Charge bylaw. Any plans going forward and all plans going forward that we're proposing will include abilities for active transportation, multimodal planning, regional transit infrastructure, and also accommodating future vehicular traffic impacts. On the non-residential density piece, I think it's important to state, we're already currently zoned for up to 80,000 square, sorry, 80,000 square meters of non-residential density. This is a long-term, large-scale project, and we want to ensure that we have the flexibility to accommodate future growth and visions within the future. We understand in January of this year, February of this year, sorry, Colliers submitted a commercial report planning for the city of Callwood, and we are undertaking our own report that will look at the multitude of opportunities that could be realized on this property, such as universities, cultural centers, government offices, municipal halls, you know, etc., conferences, etc. We think this is a huge opportunity. This is a 20-year-plus opportunity for Callwood to grow their non-residential tax base, both today and in the future. And then finally, the last issue we see, or item we see on the agenda tonight, as outlined in Mr. Carlson's report, is parks and open space. We've heard loud and clear from the public, from members of staff and council, an important item to them is ensuring access to the waterfront, reasonable parking, and amenities on the beachfront. We are working on a plan that will work on the commitment, basically, at the time of rezoning and at the time of subdivision, early on, we want to be able to deliver not only the waterfront access as dedicated, but also a number of projects that will be community amenity items right off the bat. You don't wait years and years to get them, you'll get them right away. We've shared some of our waterfront design plans with staff, and we do hope to host a third and final open house on September 30th to, once again, convey that vision to the community as well. In summary, this is a long plan where we see a spectacular opportunity for Callwood going into the future. We see Royal Beach and Royal Bay as fantastic opportunities to be envisioned by the city as a master plan development and community. And while we know there are two separate owners and two separate applications, we do think it might be in the, we believe it's in the best interest of Callwood and the community to consider those items concurrently as rezonings. And because we do know that both of these properties represent a generational opportunity to deliver a combination of housing, amenity, and public items. We will be available during our item on the agenda to answer any questions that the committee might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for public participation?
I'll give it a shot.
There's also an opportunity, just so you know, as each item is discussed as well, for participation at that point in time, too. It's your choice.
I'll bring it forward.
Thanks, good.
I'd like to just bring a few points, sorry, Mayor, councilors, fellow coworkers, how you doing? Rob Boyle, 544 Winthrop and 540 Winthrop. And I'm here to speak about a couple of concerns that my wife and I have about the proposed development of 3510 Wishart Road. And I want to first off say, I applaud the design. I think it's awesome. Like I said, you know, they're working with staff to go forward in a progressive manner. We have concerns with the interface, obviously, of our property, a little bit of history. We own both, two lots, and they're both there, with the one faces that property. And it's our future home. That's what we're building. Took three years to get to the point where we could build our house, so, hope it doesn't take them that long to build the subdivision. Two points I want to bring up is in the staff report, page 12, section 3.5, Habitat Protection. It reads, "The Aquatex Report does not recommend that the habitat conservation area at the rear of 544 Winthrop be extended to the subject property." I got no problem with the statement. The statement's true. The report does not recommend it. But we find it a very negative statement. The report does not say it shouldn't be done, doesn't say it's not benefit to do it, it just says they're not recommending it. So, I mean, I think that would be a point to get clarified, is it seems to us, when we reread it, that we shouldn't be doing that, and that doesn't seem right. Further clarification on that report would have been, is how the compensation is calculated for the habitat loss. In the Aquatex Report, recommendation number five, it states, "The linear transit snake corridor habitat corridor would be compensated by the loss, for the lost habitat resulting from the extension of Delora Drive," figure two. In the report, figure two only shows our property. It only shows the extent of the property, or the extent of Delora, through our property. Well, the road goes right through the development property. I'm pretty sure the snake habitat extends into the subject property, but all you've done, all the report does is says, it's accountable for the loss of habitat within our property. Just thinking, should be clarified. Also in that part of it, the linear transit snake corridor terminates at the front of Lot 12 and does not link to the continuing area. Questions, I think, that should be sort of looked at. Most importantly, I think, for us, I mean, I can get into blasting concerns and things like that, and I don't think you want to hear that right now, we'll say that. The one I really want to say is, when we developed our property, it took a significant amount of time and effort to reduce the covenant area at the rear of our property to seven-and-a-half meters, where Callwood originally wanted it to be over 15 meters. There's also an area to the north of our property was covenanted for conservation habitat. In the negotiations of that reduction, was the intent that clearly stated that typical areas like this would be married across the property line, which means if you took 10 feet here, you'd take 10 feet on that side. In our case, it would be seven-and-a-half meters on our side, it would be seven-and-a-half meters on the other side. That sold my wife. We had a discussion about it, and it was not a good one. But it was kind of like, okay, that seems fair, dear. I'm sorry, that's just the way it goes. So, I read the recommendation in the Aquatex Report number three. Look at the developer's submitted site plan, proposal appendix three, both demonstrate this exact intent, but only for the rear of the property of 508 Winthrop. Not along ours. All we're asking for is that the intent and practice that is derived and clearly initiated here be extended for the whole property, i.e. ours. I hope you will take this into consideration and investigate it, and we look forward to hearing a reply from the city staff in this manner. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. I take it staff has made a few notes. Anybody else like to step forward and address the committee? Come on forward, sir. If you can just give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Gordon Yussepeck. I live at 504 Winthrop Road, right on the corner. And I was one of the people who received the letter, giving, in the mail notifying me of the development that's taking place. And so, I read through part of the rezoning application, and I just wondered if I, I guess the part that I was kind of wondering about is, with regards to the sharp-tailed snakes, the area there, and I was curious, has there been any kind of a wildlife inventory or species inventory done to confirm the presence of sharp-tailed snakes? Okay. Because I was thinking that, it seems to be, if we're, if the third-party consultant or a fourth-party, I'm not sure which one, if they're, if Aquatex, if I understand correctly, is suggesting that it is potential...
Sir, if you can just address council, please. This is your moment to address us, and we'll see if we can help you.
Okay. I guess the point I was trying to make is that I was wondering why, if in the plan, that they're going through all these extra measures to protect sharp-tailed snakes when they don't even know if sharp-tailed snakes are on the property? And the reason why I ask that is because I had an opportunity to do wildlife monitoring for sharp-tailed snakes, and so, I was just kind of curious if there had been any kind of a species inventory done on the property to either, to verify the presence of sharp-tailed snakes, and why the focus just seemed to be on sharp-tailed snakes when, without an inventory, we don't even know what species are there, if you know what I mean.
I take your point that much to do about snakes and not, little about some of the other species that might be in the area. I don't know, does staff have any thought or input on some of that, or will this be part of the process as we move forward? So, and Counselor Baxter?
I can actually cast a little bit of light on that, because I had a word with a biologist today about that. And apparently, the sharp-tailed snake is extremely hard to find. They're small, they're very fast, and they're very shy, and it is extremely rare for anybody to see one. So, they can actually never be sure unless they hire grad students, sit out there for a couple of years, to, whether there is one actually there or many, all they know is that is sharp-tailed snake typical habitat.
Thank you, Counselor Baxter. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I would just add to Counselor Baxter's comments that the sharp-tailed snake is also an endangered species, so they may not be there right now, but if they have no habitat, they definitely won't be there in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I understand, I think, I think we probably all do, that the Federal Species at Risk Act only applies to federal properties, which only makes up about 3% of the province, and that the provincial government has no species at risk legislature. And so, I guess, if we're going, if the notion is to protect the habitat on the premise that we, it's suitable habitat and we want to go ahead and protect it, I guess that's a good thing. Just curious, though, for such a small development, that they would be going through all these extra measures when they don't even know the sharp-tailed snakes are present?
Thank you very much. We've, I think we've got it, and staff will, well, I'm sure be on top of this. Anybody else like to address council, committee of the whole? All right. Moving right along, new business, 6.1 rezoning application, 3150 Wishart Road. Just a slight amendment here, I think in your initial packages, it did say that this would require an amendment to the O C P. Staff have advised that that's not the case, it's simply a land use bylaw matter, is that correct? Come on up, Dennis. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments referencing the staff report and some of the comments that were made prior to considering this application. Firstly, you do have the letter, I believe all of you should have the letter, from Mr. Boyle, that's, he's reiterated his concerns. In terms of the conservation areas on the subject property, staff rely on the applicant's biologists to give us recommendations on where they think it's appropriate for conservation areas for habitat to be secured. And that is what we've received from their biologist, who I believe is here, and you may want to speak to him directly. The other item, as Mr. Chair, you pointed out, is that your recommendation should delete the reference to amending the official community plan. The other points that I want to reference here, and it plays on the whole initiative of the site adaptive planning, is that staff were recommending that in addition to conservation areas where we want to protect the trees and existing vegetation, there'll also be habitat conservation areas to provide a wildlife corridor through the site, and again, the applicant's biologist can speak more to that if you choose. The other issue that we've, are recommending in there, and this goes back to really, as much as possible to protect the building sites from being basically leveled, is that at the time of subdivision, we will require that the footprints of the buildings be secured with a covenant. So, what that means is that prior to that being done, we will work with the applicant to ensure that their grading plans do not unnecessarily compromise the site, that is clear where those buildings are going to go, so that there's no surprises later in terms of the need to blast additional land. So, we're hoping that that will achieve the objectives in terms of the site adaptive planning. So, that's clarification we wanted to provide to council.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this development that hasn't, have something else?
Go ahead, say my name again.
Go ahead.
Rob Boyle, 544 Winthrop, 540 Winthrop. I'm not a professional speaker, you might have noticed that, so we'll just keep it straight. A lot of talk about sharp-tailed snakes. I've been on the property for three years. I have desperately tried to find one. I'm told I'm not allowed to touch them if I do, but I've tried to. There's lots of snakes around there. And I want to make sure that everybody understands, to me, when it's conservation areas, it's not the snakes, it's the birds, it's everything else that goes through. I mean, we had a family of owls that were hatched in that area this year. I had five eagles that hung out for two weeks, because there was a dead deer over there. Of course, nobody likes a dead deer. The eagles were kind of cool. I just want to reiterate, I understand the plan and I understand what was put forward, and I love the idea of adaptive planning, kind of, much as an engineer likes any kind of planning. I worry about the setback into the rock face, and it's a natural rock face. And I would encourage, hopefully, the committee to refer to staff to investigate exactly what that means. I have done construction my life, I know... I have done construction my life, I know what it takes to blow out rock or break rock. There are numbers of ways of breaking rock. The only true factor is, once you penetrate the natural face of the rock, you would inherently change the composition of it farther back. So, you don't just cut a straight line, I mean, everybody says you do, and we don't. In the building setbacks, I just want everybody to understand that. Nobody can build zero, they don't pour concrete against a rock face. So, you're looking at room beside the footings, and that's what I think that people should consider. Anyway, that's probably all I should talk about right now. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. And, and we'll bring this to the committee table now. Anyone from council? Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you. So, through the chair to staff, perhaps we could talk about the setbacks, please? So, specifically, if this property requires a 7.5 meter, or, excuse me, Mr. Boyle's property requires a 7.5 meter setback, I have, I'm not clear on where are we requesting the setbacks on this development?
So, the lot that Mr. Boyle is referring to is right adjacent to the rear of his property, and the, the plan that you have in your report indicates 1.5 meter setback. The point I should clarify, as I spoke earlier, is that as we work through this process in identifying the building footprints and the potential implications on blasting, that may be modified, but that will be work that will be done with the applicant and staff as this application proceeds through.
Councillor Logan. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to acknowledge the steps that the applicant and staff have taken to move this application forward, and it's nice to see a shift in the type of attitude when we're looking at properties like this, to recognize the value of, of the property itself, and the value it has on, on, on the community, but also as a selling feature to, with their lot. So, I think, I'm very encouraged, actually, that, that the shift is occurring. This is the second development that has readily agreed to these types of principles, so I really do appreciate that. I guess a couple of questions. I know that in the staff report, the development of lots one, two, and three will be the first off, first in the hopper to get developed, and I'm assuming the rest will, will be reliant on development of 544, or 540, or 508, I'm not quite sure, Winthrop, in order to extend Delora Drive down, is that correct, through you, Mr. Chair, to either staff or to the
Excuse me, through the chair. Thanks very much for the question. Yes, when the subdivision of 544 to create 540 and 544 Winthrop was, occurred, we took a piece of road dedication with that subdivision, which was in concert with the council recommendation of the day, consideration of that property. So, we did obtain road dedication that you can't overtly see in this plan, as well as an additional setback for statutory right-of-way for the purposes of road pedestrian use or utilities along that corridor. The road is planned to extend as well onto portions of 508 as it wraps around the rock face, leaving it largely intact, slightly altered, but largely intact, but that will be the extension straight through to Winthrop. So, this application 3510 will have to build and construct that road in order to access the lots that are available off of the Delora extension.
Right, so they're kind of landlocked, okay. Thank you. And just from the previous question that Mayor Martin asked, it seems to me, you know, the rub here is Lot 12, and, and probably as much as we might concentrate on the sharp-tailed snake, it's probably a little bit of buffer that may be desired as well by pushing back the building envelope on that lot. So, I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, that even though we're kind of in early stages, and there could be an adjustment to that lot that would push, that would increase the 1.5 meters, and allow it to grow, is from what I'm hearing? Or is there that flexibility to be able to either reconfigure the lot to increase the 1.5 meters?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, as I mentioned, that will be part of the process that will, staff will be going through, the applicant, and it will basically be dependent on the grading plan that's submitted, and how that building footprint will be cited, as Mr. Boyle pointed out, in a way that doesn't compromise that rock face adjacent to his property. So, that will be part of the staff analysis.
Thank you.
Councillor Baxter?
I've got a lot of questions and comments. If you feel you want me to take a break and fit somebody else in, just let me know. So, I'm really glad to see that this report talks about costs versus the tax revenue, and that this will be made more definite in the near future. I think that's something that's been needed for a while. I'm glad to see it doesn't talk about building permit fees and other fees as if they were somehow a windfall profit to the city, since they're, by law, they must be offset by costs. So, I'm glad that's not in there anymore. I'm also glad to see that this development is on a bus route, which is always good for our environmental goals. And I know that AHLT talk about the multimodal connections in their letter, but it's not in the context of the report. I'm really, really happy to see the agreement to build to Step Code Three. I think that's, we've had other buildings here that have been built to Step Code Three, but not formally. They haven't had to, to meet that, they've just done that on their own. This will be the first subdivision where it's actually going to be a requirement in the development agreement, as I understand it. But despite those last two good things especially, I would note that under Section Eight of the report, Strategic Plan, the report says the application supports the strategic goal of carbon neutral, energy positive, and water smart. And the, the use of Step Code Three makes this subdivision better than most of all subdivisions constructed in the past, if not all of them, but it will not be carbon neutral or energy positive. And I don't say that as a criticism of the, of the proposal, I just want the, a more frank assessment of what is actually in pursuit of our goals and what is only moving towards them. The development will need inputs of energy, so it's not energy positive, and if we allow gas furnaces, it will also be a net producer of greenhouse gases, as it will, of course, during construction, and I think we need to acknowledge that in future. Another request in regards to future reports, it's hard to assess the effect on neighboring lots, so I was trying to understand exactly where the road, Delora Drive, meets the right-of-way on 544, but since the only plan we have that shows the proposed road location doesn't show any of the neighboring property lines, that was impossible. And I think it would be simple to ask developers to, on all their plans, simply include the property lines of the adjacent properties, not the entire property line, but where it meets the, the property in question, and then we can get our bearings better. There was mention about the traffic study, and I would say the only thing that I really think the traffic study need, or traffic engineers needs to look at for this, is to check the sightlines of those driveways from, from the top of the hill to the south. It's a very short sightline. I'm not going to comment on whether it's good enough or not, but I think we should get professionals to do that. I have a question for staff. Was there a report regarding which areas of trees should be protected?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, there is an arborist report that has been prepared by the applicant that we will be working through to determine whether these are appropriate.
So, could that be shared with council?
Yes.
Thank you. And will it be the arborist that decides whether the possible trees for retention are in fact retained or not?
Typically, this is a collaboration between staff, the arborist, and also their degrief as their consultants in terms of their overall tree management plan, so it won't be solely the arborist.
In regards to the site adaptive planning nature of this proposal, I look at this site, and I've actually walked the whole site, and I've never seen a site that was better suited to the notion of not altering the topography and still getting maximum development. And so I congratulate the applicants on choosing the right property, as well as doing the right thing. I can see how you might have got one more lot, possibly, but they, they seem to be pulling off the amazing trick of protecting the topography and getting as many lots in there as it'll take. In regards to the trees that are to be retained, now I assume they'll be protected by covenant, since not all, a lot of them aren't protected by bylaw, but how will they be protected practically? As I look at the site, there's no way for city staff to get in, back in there to see whether the trees are being removed, unless we're going to have staff right-of-ways to allow that. So, if the people on Lot 11, for instance, decide that, you know, they're just not getting any sunshine in the windows, and they want to take down some of these trees, what's going to stop them?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The condition contained in the staff recommendation for the development agreement is that those conservation areas will be fenced with a black chain link fence, and also signed to advise property owners in the future that that's a no-go zone.
So, will, will the fence have some discreet signs on?
Yes.
Now, in regards to the question from the neighbor about blasting and its effect on the soil regime and presumably the water regime, will basements be permitted in these
I would imagine that's possible, but again, it would be part of the analysis that we go through with the geotech and also the stormwater management plan.
But inevitably, I mean, we know that the rock's pretty near the surface on this lot. So, if we look at lots 12 to nine, for instance, the rock goes up steeply behind them and reappears in front of them, and there's a rock out crapping, you can see in front of 12 and 11. So, obviously, if they're going to have an eight-foot basement, there's going to be a lot of blasting, and they're going to create a large hole in which they have to put drainage around the bottom of the basement wall to drain water away, and that's going to suck water out of the surroundings, which seems to reduce the chances of the trees surviving. This is a very, very dry area, anyway. So, I'm thinking it might be a good idea not to have any basements, since inevitably that's a lot of blasting.
Mr. Chair, if I, and perhaps the applicant can provide some more clarity to this, but my understanding is the idea, particularly in those lots that you referred to, 9, 10, 11, is that it would enter in off the bottom level and then step out at the top, right? So, it, so it would not be a basement the full extent of the building footprint, but the applicant can probably clarify that?
Yes, that's correct. We obviously haven't got into the level of detail of designing the houses yet, but I would foresee that most of, many, maybe most of the properties will be sort of a walkout basement, where the basement level will be maybe partially blasted into the back, but then you go up one level and walk out the back. So, that you'd show two, two levels at the front, one level at the back, or the other way around on the downhill side. But we're certainly going to try to minimize the amount of blasting, and we definitely don't have any intention of trying to have main floors level with the existing surface of the rock, and then an eight-foot basement below that. That would be, as you say, completely counterproductive to what we're trying to do.
I appreciate that, thank you. And at what stage of the process would we be able to know the answer to that?
Typically, that is something that's dealt with at a staff level as part of the development permit, which is, again, does not require council approval, but it would, there would be a grading plan, as well as other information that staff would be reviewing and determining the impact of those houses.
One small but important detail on the, the habitat linear route. At the moment, the culvert goes to the north of Lot 12's driveway, and delivers the, whatever it is that's coming through the culvert in the way of wildlife, into Lot 12's front yard. And I know it says open space there, but it's a very small amount of open space, which most likely will look a lot like lawn. And yet, if we move the culvert to the other side of Lot 12's driveway, the, it would open into the, the right-of-way already on Lot 544, which is protected habitat space, which seems to be a far better route to get to the main extent of open space behind these houses. And I did address that with the biologist who wrote the report, and he felt that was, would be a good improvement. Can I leave that with staff? The linear habitat protection area, also if it's not protected, will be, when I say protected, I mean actually physically protected, will be open to dogs, small children, who, as we know, can turn a lawn into dust, and can certainly turn that area into dust. Therefore, I would suggest that there should be a page wire fence between the living space and the, and the protected area. And I'm not a biologist, I didn't come up with the idea of a page wire fence, you can be sure of that. I'm getting very near the end. Oh, and signs on the page where fence would be a good idea. I just want to take note of another part of the report. Under 3.3 Official Community Plan, it indicates the site development will incorporate policies that incorporate design solutions that enhances ecosystem health and function. Now, I think we need to be honest with ourselves here as well. It is impossible to develop this site with 12 houses without enormous damage to the existing ecosystem, and the function of it. But we need to understand that every time we do a development, we make a trade-off between the ecosystem that exists there and the need for housing. the ecosystem that exists there and the need for housing. And I'm not concerned about making that trade-off in this case, but I think we just need to understand what we're doing and not pretend that this is going to enhance what is there. There are several very good attempts to limit the damage, which we'll see how successful those are, but I think that's probably all that can be done. And I would just like us to be honest about what we're doing. And that's the end of my questions and remarks, and I may have some amendments to propose to the motion at the end of this.
Counselor Day.
Thank you. In looking at this site, as with many others, I recognize that there are a number of trade-offs between, as Counselor Baxter pointed out, the environment that supports owls and eagles and all the other animals that we love to see in our neighborhoods and people who also need to be in our neighborhoods. And what I've found difficult over the years, and I'm hoping to find some clarity moving forward with our new OCP and looking at site adaptive planning, is to find out what's involved in ensuring that the height and the depth of the house sites are understood by the community before it comes to a public hearing, so that when our neighbors come out to a public hearing to see what is proposed in or near their neighborhood, that they have a reasonably good understanding of what they will see there after the development takes place. So, for example, we've talked a lot about the rocky outcrop and the setbacks. And so whether or not there are basements or basement suites, whether additional parking is going to be required as a result, how do we, how do we get that understood before we get to public hearing?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So it's important to clarify that these lots will be larger than 550 square meters, so they will not be subject to Form and Character Development Permit. The lots and the footprints will be. The other point of clarification is that the applicant is proposing that these lots will all have the potential for secondary suites. Staff are looking at ways to mitigate the potential impact of the parking that often accompanies the secondary suites. And we're looking at potentially requiring or limiting the amount of hardscaping that can happen in the front yard is one way to deal with that. So that's something we'll be working through with the applicant. But it's important to stress that the design of these houses will not be subject to a development permit.
All right. So that's very little comfort, unfortunately. The next question I have is, I'm not sure whether staff can answer this or if it's the developer who would be able to answer. And that is with regard to the drawing that we're, we have in our package, which shows Delora Drive, and it shows the road right-of-way and the setbacks. Three meters to the north, six meters, or maybe that's actually east. I haven't found my bearings on, but I believe it's east and west. So there's three meters setback on one side of the road right-of-way, six meters on the other, and 18 meters that is designated for Delora Drive road right-of-way. But the design that we're looking at shows a large majority of that road right-of-way being open space and tree retention and driveways. So I'm wondering, is that the most appropriate use of our road right-of-way?
Through the chair. It was felt with looking at the road composite and how the road right-of-way could be made up, that perhaps some of the best integrated approach to preserving those rocks would be to put them into the public scale. That way, the private property owner would be actually trespass to alter some of the rocks, and that's why that road right-of-way is slightly off-centered.
And I just would like to concur with Counselor Baxter in regard to having, you know, maybe even another page that showed the adjacent properties as well, so it is easier to orient ourselves when we're looking at it. Because even though I know this area very, very well, it's close to my home. I've walked there for 30 years. But I do find it hard to envision exactly where the edges are and who might be impacted by that. So I just think that would be very helpful, and I do applaud the map for having the contours on it showing us some of the elevations. I find that looking at this plan, Lot 12, to me, is very problematic for a couple of reasons. It's very, looking at the plan, to me, the pink box is very close to the preserved area, so there's very little opportunity for that preserved area to not be walked on, played football on, whatever. You know, as a retained area, it could be very impacted by human use. And the, I'm assuming that where we were talking about the corridor being placed underneath the Delora Drive access, even if it's moved over to this side, the likelihood of it having considerable impacts from human uses, meaning that basically, when people are there, animals have a harder time. So the corridor seems to me a little bit tight in terms of, you know, the chances are that the humans are going to get to use the area and the animals are probably not. And I would really like to see some sort of a design that respected the fact that, you know, there's a big chunk of property here that has been set aside trying to preserve our natural environment that we all appreciate. And I just want to make sure that when we do go to that effort and expense, that it's functional long-term.
Thank you, Counselor Day. Counselor Parkinson.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. A number of comments. I'm going to start, I think, by reminding council that when we agreed to suspend the APC, we recognized at the time that it might make sense on a number of applications to listen to them at Committee of the Whole, ask them to come back to a later Committee of the Whole after there's been some more thought, both by ourselves and themselves, and that then, and not necessarily feel that we should deal with them the first time they're here in the public realm. So I think that might be appropriate in this case. I do have a number of comments from reading the report. Obviously, supporter of the site adaptive planning, it's good to see it being implemented. The trouble is, of course, that the devil is always in the details. And I guess the other trouble is that I'm a detail guy, so I apologize. I understand that a lot of these things have perhaps been referenced and staff has sort of acknowledged their existence and their proper place, shall I say, in the scheme of things. The trouble is, we have to have enough confidence to move this thing forward in pretty much the shape it's in. If we were to say, this is brilliant, let's go ahead exactly the way it is today, my belief is the developers would leave the room saying, well, good, we've got approval for 12 lots with suites. The planners would leave the room saying, good, we've got the environmental considerations we were looking for. And as more details came in and push came to shove, they might find that they're in a bit of a conflict on a number of issues as more information becomes available. So if I could just go through the comments that I made as I was going through the report, like the developer, I wondered about a traffic management plan for 11 lots. It seemed, it seemed a bit much. So be it. Staff feels it's necessary. I see they're talking about perhaps 12 suites too, so maybe it's 23 new lots. Perhaps it's worthwhile. I struggle with the municipal road and a 10-meter road right-of-way. Obviously, road right-of-ways are typically 18 to 20 meters. So when they talk about a 10-meter road right-of-way with a 7-meter stat right-of-way, that's a little bit different and novel. You know, the road right-of-ways are selected for a number of reasons. There will be, besides just the actual asphalt and curb and sidewalk, a number of utilities. There may be issues with the gas company or the electric company, the tellus company being in a stat right-of-way, just what that looks like, if there's driveways in it, if there's rock knobs being retained in it and things like that. I would think that before we sign off on that, we should have a better understanding of what exactly that means, how it looks. So that was one concern I had. Again, if we're talking about a narrow road and suites, and again, it was mentioned by the, by the planning staff that there will be a concern with where do people park? My son moved into a subdivision in Sanage that has a number of suites, and it's just gone. So we're trying to find a place to pick him up and to park a car. So if you're going to allow suites, you have to thoroughly address where the parking's going to go for the people in the suites, the people in the house, and the visitors. Maybe it's doable, maybe it's not. I don't believe that even at this level of consideration, we have enough information on the grading of the site and the road geometry, the talk of a road connecting from Winthrop through to Delora, without seeing what that might look like now and in the future. If we're to credit the developer of this site with being brilliant and placing just the absolute perfect alignment of the road through his site, what does that do to sites beyond? You know, does it not have to, if we plan on a road from Winthrop to Delora, do we not have to look at the whole road in some fashion to make sure that we're not sort of, you know, optimizing this site and really causing problems further down the road in the future? Maybe that information's available, maybe staff knows that. I just believe it's something we should understand a little better. I think that we've heard a lot of comforting thoughts on the grading of the site and the protection of the grades, but we don't have any information on the grades. Somebody commented on, you know, how useful it was to have contour lines on the site, but on my plan, I couldn't find what those contours were. Are those half-meter contours, one-meter contours, two-meter contours? You know, not that I'm going to fuss about it. I will leave it to staff, but I would like to see what kind of grades we're looking at on the roads and on the driveways. The conservation area, there was a note in there about making sure it was fenced prior to subdivision. Again, I would suspect it should be prior to construction. The note on restricting hardscaping of front yards, I think the planner threw that out as a way to perhaps control the number of suites, whereas I looked at it and said, well, if you're restricting hardscaping in the front yards with suites, you're maybe creating a problem. So it sounds like the planner understands that concern. I'm sure he's on top of it. Again, I see they're talking about doing full frontage improvements on Wishart, and, you know, this is going to leave us with an orphan section of curb and sidewalk and boulevard landscaping and irrigation systems and on and on. I would, you know, I would certainly trade that for a little more curb and sidewalk and lose the landscaping until somebody else came along, but I'm probably going to be told that that's not possible, that you can only deal with what's in front of your property. But something I would consider. The stormwater requirement that post-development runoff doesn't exceed predetermined pre-development runoff, well, you know, frankly, that statement's just not possible. So it should be under some conditions. It could be done under, you know, the critical conditions. It could be done, but it can't always be done for every condition. When we talk about energy efficiency, again, I think at this council table, at some point, we're going to have to talk about, you know, when do we mandate plug-ins for electric cars? I mean, maybe we can't on an individual subdivision, but, you know, we're starting now to look at developments that are going to be around for decades. And as an optimist, I believe in decades we'll all be driving electric cars, and I'm not sure how fast that'll come along, or how big an issue it is to do it after. Perhaps in an individual house, it's not, it's not necessary. The protected area in the middle of the site, on the landscape architect plan, it's not labeled as anything. On the Aquatex plan, it's called a park. I don't really think we want it as a park. Certainly, it's got no road access to it. I don't know why we'd want to do. So again, there's some issues about if it's not a park, who owns it? How does, how does anybody have any control over it? I think we talked about in the backyard of Lot 12, but there's other places on the site that are supposedly to be protected. And, you know, we want to make sure if they're worth protecting, that there's a mechanism to do that. And then, you know, we've heard a lot of things about the sharp-tailed snakes and what happens and what doesn't happen, and do they exist, and, you know, do they not exist? And in the Aquatex report, it says that post rezoning habitat creation is to be reviewed by experts. And I guess, you know, if there's people who know what it should be, perhaps they should be involved before the rezoning and, you know, give us the best available opinion at this time, because, you know, we're obviously all struggling over this creature that may or may not exist and may or may not need this kind of setback or whatever. So I would suggest that there's perhaps a little more information needed before this moves forward, and at the appropriate time, I'd be prepared to make a motion to that effect.
Any further discussion? Counselor Kobayashi first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I agree. I'm not too sure where that road goes down to, onto Winthrop. That wasn't really clear to me. But it's obvious which ones are the three homes that are facing...
Wishart.
Wishart. But it wasn't too clear. I just have a 30,000-foot question, actually. I'm not an expert like my fellow counselors here. It's far beyond my scope of attention. That's for damn sure. Obviously, I think I looked at it, and you guys actually nailed what I thought the requirement should be. So I'll let you guys do the proper staff work. That's how I feel about this. And you don't need me to tell you how to do your job. That's for sure. But my bigger question right now is, it's just not this one development. It's all the developments altogether. And what I'm concerned about, and, you know, and I still haven't got a satisfactory answer on this one. I understand a few years ago, because when I was sat in the crowd over there, they were doing the calculations determining how much sewage, stormwater, what our capacity should be. We had to submit something to the CRD for the sewage treatment. And to me, that, the big question to me is that, is someone doing a running tally right now? Because we have the developments, Row Beach, Row Bay, we have OV Golf Course, we have the Latoya Development, we have this, we have lots of them that are happening. And I guess my question is, is someone keeping an eye on the ball as far as, you know, we sort of said we were going to use X number of liters per whatever, and do we have the capacity? Like, I don't know. Are we, are we half of what our capacity should be? Where are we going to be? Like, where are we going to be in 20 years? Where are we going to be in 30 years? I don't understand that. So that's, you know, to me, is a governance issue right now, and it's got me concerned. So I'm, through the chair, my question to staff is, where are we?
Through the chair, we've been working with CRD to establish some of our flow rates through the trunk main as a collaborative effort between the Westshore Municipalities to establish it. However, I can't report on what that number of capacity right now. We have been relying on the fact that the Royal Bay areas of development haven't hit their potential, and there's excessive capacity in that line. However, the rezoning statements that are coming forward, that's part of the technical studies of those areas and that are undertaking them right now, so we can bring forward that... studies of those areas and that are undertaking them right now, so we can bring forward that capacity consideration for the accumulated flow. This development, in terms of the 12 lots that are proposed here, ultimately won't break the bank, 'cause we're underutilized right now. It's once we add the capacity of the full growth potential of Royal Bay that we're going to have the system stressed. That's why those parties are responsible for the technical study for the servicing
And just one last question. I agree with Counselor Parkinson, as far as the need for a traffic study, why can't we just use those numbers and add them onto Royal Bay and Royal Beach and everybody else has done, 'cause that's gonna affect Latoria, right? So I don't understand why we would go through the wasted time to do that.
Through the chair, there's been a couple of questions about the road alignment and geometry, and yes, the entire geometry and alignment for Delora has been considered. It is presently dead-ending about two properties north of here, with no provision for cul-de-sac, and it was considered in the transportation master plan to carry on. This design carries that through and relates it downward towards the south of the town to Winthrop. So your question allows me to answer a couple of different questions that came about. And you'll notice as well at the south component of the map, there is a 15-meter right-of-way that's shown. That benefits from the 10 meters that was provided on 544, Latoria, as well as a dedication request that will be required of development of the neighboring property when and if it comes forward. Yes, the road will narrow as it goes through those rock constraints, but entire way from the north to the south, the alignment has been reviewed. We haven't gone into the detailed exercise of grades. And specific to the traffic study, we use rezonings and traffic studies to update our master plan in terms of the overall growth for the municipality. The traffic study, though, here is not specifically relevant to 12 lots or the three lots that are on Winthrop. It's for the actual sightline and geometry at the Winthrop and Wishart intersection, which is expected to expand. So there wasn't a focus on the geometry as mentioned by Counselor Baxter, it was more for the intersection geometrics that might need to be just tweaked to improve performance.
Thank you. Any final comments, Counselor Baxter?
Yes, in response to some items raised by Counselor Parkinson, he did ask a question about suites, and I'd like to know the answer, are suites allowed?
The applicant has requested that suites would be included in the zoning, and they will, and the staff's position is they will be included.
So in that case, what about the parking?
Well, as I mentioned, there is a requirement that they have to provide additional parking for the suites, and staff are looking at ways to mitigate the impacts in terms of hardscaping. What that might mean is certain lots will not be conducive to secondary suites, 'cause they won't be able to accommodate the additional parking. And the applicant has, we've been in discussion with the applicant about that, and I believe I can say you're agreeable to that, correct?
Okay, thank you. And on the question of the orphan sidewalk, there is in fact sidewalk and bike lane just up the road in front of the new development, and the approval of this development sort of assumes that there will be a knock-on effect. I noticed the property next door is for sale. I'm sure it's not for sale as a single-family lot, considering that it's bigger than this one, well, not the one next door, but the one next but one. And so I think we'll see that sidewalk completed fairly quickly. But the question raised about when these houses can be built, I just wanna get a sense of what the timetable is. The three houses on Wishart can obviously be subdivided and built at the applicant's timetable if it's approved throughout, but what happens to the others where there's no road access at the moment? How will that be dealt with?
Through your chair, thank you for the question. Timing is gonna be a critical factor here, because more than the road access is the intent to serve us sewers. There's quite an extension that has to happen up Wishart Road, down Winthrop and up into this area here. The dedication south of this property has already been provided to that 10 meters described. We've already met with the neighboring property owner who does not have an application before us right now, but about the city's intent to build road on their portion of land as well. So it'll be the intention to do a partial road standard to realize that improvement. However, I do not know the timeline for being able to extend the sewer up Wishart. We haven't gone into that level of discussion, quite honestly, because we're at the preliminary stage of committee's consideration for the rezoning, before we go through a lot of detailed design, grades, driveways, alignments. We needed to find out the first consideration of committee.
Yeah, my question is not directed at detail so much as, I guess it boils down to, who's going to build that road? Presumably, if these folks wanted to build it, they've got half or a good piece of a right-of-way to build it in, or they can wait until the others build, is that right?
That's correct. We have had discussions with the developer about potential late-comer considerations that could be applied to the neighboring lands as a way of offsetting those costs to the developer, however, none of those being finalized at this present time.
Thank you. And lastly, I would take it from what you've said so far, that we probably haven't established whether all of the utilities can fit in that road right-of-way, and that will be something that will be known following detailed design.
15 meters of road right-of-way, which is the demonstrated right-of-way width at the south extent of the property, is a tight right-of-way. However, I've had a lot of experience with building under 15 meters, and you can fit the majority of it. However, there is a pinch point just south of here, and you're very right, it is not included on the map, and it's the intention to keep rock outcropping. And the vision has, as we work through those detailed designs, is that we may need to thin or restrict certain portions of the use, so that we can preserve that rock in best form. So yes, Counselor Baxter, we will need to go further with the design elements there.
Thank you.
Thank you, and just a couple of quick thoughts. I had a question, is this a stratified neighborhood?
This is intended to be built under the Land Title Act, which means it will not be strata.
And am I reading this right, there's no entrance to the development from Wishart Road, other than the three properties? So the entrance would be down Delora, or I guess up Delora from Winthrop?
Yes, the site limitation of the grade and the natural spacing between those three lots, the front on Wishart to the upper property, prevented that accessory. It would be too steep and it would alter too much of the landscape?
Counselor Day.
Thank you. Just had a thought as we were discussing it here about Wishart Road, when we're talking about the road right-of-way, and when the sidewalk was put on the eastern side of Wishart Road, it was laid actually on top of what was the bike lane. And so it is necessary for the proper functioning of Wishart Road to have some extra width there, so that we could accommodate the bike lanes on both sides of the road. And it looks like sidewalk would be on both sides of the road as well, because there is sidewalk on the east side further south, and there is sidewalk on the west side further north. So what I'm, this is all to say that what I'm seeing, because I drive through there almost daily, is I've seen a lot of cyclists cycling on the sidewalk now, because of the geometry of the road and people having a tendency to cut the corner a little bit. There's really not room for a car and a cyclist and a pedestrian at this point in time. So I just wanted to flag that as being an issue. This is a major route to both elementary and secondary schools, and so I think it's quite critical that we provide the infrastructure for active transportation. And as it is right now, it is very difficult. In fact, there is a bus stop that's probably where a sidewalk would be in the future right now, just to the north of this area. So it's something that we definitely need to get right when we have the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Counselor Day. We do have a recommendation put forward by staff.
So moved.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, so I have a fresh one here, and I'm gonna read it out. I'm gonna read your motion for you, Your Worship.
Thanks.
That the appropriate amendments to the land use bylaw be prepared, together with a development agreement, as outlined in Appendix 1 of the staff report dated August 19th, 2019, and that the applicant provide a tree management plan to the satisfaction of the city and report back to council prior to a public hearing. Terms of reference are to be provided by the city. And further, that the applicant provide a traffic study to the satisfaction of the city and report back to council prior to a public hearing. Terms of reference are to be provided by the city. Any discussion?
Yeah, I believe we're rushing it. I'll be voting against this. I do think it would be more appropriate to, and I don't mean this as a negative or to pretend that things are off track or we're not looking for information, but there does seem to be a lot of sort of questions raised, answers given about information that's perhaps already known by some, by not by all. And I would think this would be a perfect case to bring this back with a little more detail for council to really understand what we're approving here. So I'll be voting against this motion.
Sorry, who, is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion put forward by the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was reading when you were making your motion. I, sorry, if I, may I speak, Mr. Chair? I quite agree with Counselor Parkinson, that I would really like to have, a number of questions have been raised here tonight. I would like to have an opportunity for staff to bring that information back to us before we move ahead with it. And I'm not trying to unduly slow it down, but I just would like to get the answers to our questions well laid out before we make a decision.
Any final discussion? Calling the vote, all those in favor? The motion passes, Counselor Parkinson and Counselor Day in opposition. You got that, Amanda? Next item on the agenda, 6.2, Royal Bay, Royal Beach Technical Studies. Just had a few thoughts before we get started. Staff with this item on our agenda are attempting to provide counsel and the public with the current status of the development proposal for the Royal Bay Beach area. Staff are gonna provide us with a briefing as to the current status of the project. There are several technical studies that are currently underway and being reviewed, and as each of these items are completed, a thorough staff report will be provided to council in a future agenda. If we could all please keep our comments in a general sense, this is not about some of the specifics of those items, but really just to hear about what staff are working on, on our behalf. With that, over to you. Thank you so much, Brent.
Thank you very much, Your Chair. This is a briefing for Royal Bay and Royal Beach. It's the same sort of concept that we brought forward for the Gablecraft portions of Latoria South in, earlier this year in June. The development concept is for the beach portion of the Royal Bay lands, as we've heard, were purchased in late of 2017 by Seacliff Properties. It's approximately 130 acres located to the east side of Latoria. In terms of our process, the application is to amend our official community plan and zoning, and we were requesting several technical studies. The analysis will be provided back to committee of the whole in individual sections, and the concept will be revised and based on that analysis, and then it'll come back through committee of the whole or as directed by committee and council. Our list of technical studies that we're proposing are very, very similar to the list that we saw with the Royal Bay South rezoning consideration in early June. Parks terms of reference for Royal Beach, as well as traffic impact and lands adjacent to Royal Beach, including Royal Beach, Latoria South, Latoria Royal Corridor, Veterans Memorial Parkway and Olympic View. Parking study replace the current parking standards for Royal Beach. There's a typo on that where Item 3 says for Latoria South, it should say for Royal Beach. Item 4, which is capacity analysis for the storm, sanitary and water infrastructure of lands adjacent to the Latoria South, including the beach, Royal, Latoria Road Corridor and Veterans Memorial Parkway through to Olympic View. An absorption study regarding the proposed non-residential floor space. These first five items on the list are identical to those being requested from Gablecraft for the Latoria South rezoning that was considered by committee in June. The lower three, Items 6, 7, and 8, the coastal assessment regarding shoreline erosion, is specific to the Royal Beach proposal, as well as the geotechnical setback assessment regarding slope stability and the revised certificate of compliance regarding site contamination, of which we've heard today as identified by Seacliff Properties, that all of those studies are underway. Staff has actually received portions of most of those studies that have received before you, was just working through them and then presenting them back to committee and therefore council. Looking at the specifics, the Royal Beach shoreline has been subject to use over a multitude of years. We all know it to be the gravel pit, and there's, as you can see by this historical photo, that there are some settlement ponds and existing ponds that are down there, as well as the parking lot that was created earlier in the development cycle for the use of the public. There is a view to the north of the beach and the erosion profile that's on the beach going all the way to the north of Colbert Peninsula, and the present use of the site as we stand right now. The geotechnical assessment and the steep slope consideration will reflect on how the sea level rises anticipated to affect this area, how the erosional plane will happen on the front, as well as how that slope will be considered as the development moves forward for protection of the front space, park space, and then the built form, as we work through that with the developers and committee. And then we'll address the historical uses on the site, which deals with the certificate of contamination, which you've heard from Seacliff, that they're actively pursuing and have obtained. So lastly, the infrastructure component, we've heard tabled today at an earlier discussion that we're working to understand some of the capacity constraints that are existing in our system. We're working with the CRD to identify those, as well as understanding how our lift stations are presently operating for today and in the future. Gablecraft and Royal Beach have volunteered collectively to work towards these end outputs, and have engaged persons to already start looking at them, and I appreciate their assistance in helping us understand our present status, as well as our future status with these development objectives before us. Lastly, a reflect on the technical studies that we're working forward to. And as I noted before, Items 1 through 5 are identical list to the list that was presented to committee, this committee in June, and are specific to the Latoria South Gablecraft rezoning. Items 6 through 7, the coastal assessment, the geotechnical, and the revised certificate of compliance, are specific to these waterfront and Royal Beach lands. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and otherwise, the developers are in the room with us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Brent, committee? Ladies first, Counselor Day.
Thank you. I had a number of technical questions, but then, as I'm hearing you speak, I realized that you're going to be coming back, so some of my questions that are more detailed about the report, perhaps it would be better if I just sent them to you and we could get an update at the next meeting, when you're going to be presenting again, if I understand that correctly. But one question really sticks out for me, and in the report, it said that there's been technical analyses carried out over the last two decades to assess the shoreline erosion. And my understanding, 'cause I was here when that erosion was asked to be monitored back in 1999, and my understanding was that that study had lapsed, and that it was re-initiated when we looked at this again a few years ago. So do we have data going back 20 years about the erosion?
I do not. In the technical studies and the consideration, that was before when it was still BCI MC properties. There was five years of consecutive study data that was required by the development of these lands. That has been undertaken by Seacliff. We're at the point of seven years of consecutive studies, and frankly, there is a flag in the last report that says, "And another study should occur this summer." That was identified to Seacliff, and they'd already admitted that, yep, they'd already engaged the consultant, which is NHC, to perform that study. So I think we're going to have a good representation of seven years of consecutive study, but there'll be a gap from that seven-year period to the past.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'm wondering, what financial obligation would the city have to mitigate the effects of climate change on coastal developments that we permit to develop? So the reason I'm asking this question now is because that's really kind of the crux of the matter, I think, for the rest of the community, is if we give approvals and there is significant slippage and changes over time, is the rest of... is significant slippage and changes over time, is the rest of Callwood going to be on the hook for mitigating that?
That's a great question. Through the chair, the erosional influences on that, of that shoreline is an item that we're going to come back, come back to address. However, the province in 2018, the early part of 2018 mandated that coastal cities consider one-meter level of sea level rise. That's been discussed with Seacliff Properties, and they've actually volunteered a two-meter level consideration. So there will be expectation that that slope will erode, and will erode over time, and the scale of time is in, is in the century essentially measured. In regards to the financial liability, that's a geo, a geotechnical setting statement. Land is not anticipated, nor is it the municipal requirement to make land flat or wholly accessible to a property owner. However, the consideration of how that land slopes and fails or erodes should be part of it. You can see it on survey plans where they identify the boundaries of creeks and streams as natural present boundary, because that means quite frankly, that natural present bounty will be added to and taken away as that stream erodes. That's the same thing with the coastal erosion studies. So it's an acknowledgement more that it'll be eroded to, and then the geotechnical plane of how to deal with that. Will there need to be piles or shoring, or what sort of effect? And that green shores, soft shore, hard shore interface has a direct relation to that. When we bring, when we bring back the geotechnical consideration of the lands, part of that presentation in my head is to show that two-meter setback line for the two-meter, two-meter level consideration for sea level rise, as well as just talk about that erosion plane relevant to that, so that we can create an accurate picture of what that'll look like over time, over time. It will affect public land, it'll affect private land.
Thank you.
Counselor Kobayashi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just through the chair, I guess this question is more to the applicant, and this has to do with the, with their traffic impact assessment study they did, and the, the geotechnical assessments they're doing right now. I was just wondering if, if they've absolutely factored in all the, the proposed amount of both residential and non-residential development in, in, in those studies? If I can get that direct answer, please, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council and staff. The answer to that is yes. We have factored in, working closely with Royal Bay through Gablecraft, through Olympic View and, and their understanding of, of what their proposal in the future, and other developments which we call on the La Torre Walk, Walkway. Those, those were factored in, in both the 2019 study by Watt and the 2019 study by Bund, and also it's factored in into 2018 study that your staff had Watt do for that quarter.
Thank you. My second question is, it's, it's actually to staff right now, and I'm just, I was just amazed that I did get to look at the plan for the, the Royal Bay development, the Gablecraft development, and touch, much to my surprise, I was very surprised that the limited amount of commercials, you know, commercial area that was being set up for commercial. And the reason I make this comment is back in 2016, if you were to look at non-residential versus residential, our, the multiplier was 4.2 here in Callwood. Amazingly large number, second highest actually, so lots of reasons for it, but, and it shouldn't be that high, you know, it should be two to three, in that range with, as with the rest of the municipalities, but just based on that factor alone, it just didn't make a lot of sense why, you know, we're, we're limiting the amount of non-residential, like the commercial. I just found that very, very odd. I, I did make the comment, wasn't speaking on anyone's behalf, but I do have some issues with that right now. If we're going to continue on with the ratios that we have, which is around 90% residential tax revenue and, and 10% commercial, this doesn't make sense. Nothing's going to change if, if we leave it the way it is. This is insanity. So, you know, I'm a numbers guy, and I'm, this does not compute. So, and, and, you know, you can always make the argument that, well, the market's not here. Well, it's not for us to determine that. I mean, we tell the developer, we want this, and if he builds it, he's going to know there's a market, and he's certainly not going to leave the buildings empty. So, I, I was very, very surprised, so I, I just wanted to find out, you know, from staff if, if those multipliers were still approximately the same for, for 2018, 2019. We went after 2019 data, so I do find that very alarming, and I want to point that out right now, because we have to be looking after the future of the city. It's our job. And the last comment, it's more or less a comment, but a question at the same time. It's, you know, this whole plan has been ongoing for about 20 years, and the master plan for just over five years, and I just have this feeling that I think I'm going to, I'm going to outlive this. I, I just get this feeling right now. And so, you know, my question to staff is, what, what would it take for us to get this going? You know, it's, 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 it's a frustration for me right now, and, and, you know, you know, if I want to make that promise, keep my promise to myself to be one-and-out guy here, I'd like to at least see it started. You know, so it is frustrating, so, you know, how much longer will it take before, you know, we actually start delivering a public space and, and see a return on the investment in Callwood for, you know, for the fruit of our labors?
I, I, I don't know. Through the chair, I don't know if some of that was a rhetorical question, but there is an opportunity for me to provide some clarity as well. I will not be back at the next meeting to discuss some of these technical studies. It will take me a little bit longer to bring back a proposal, and we're going to be dealing with them. My intention is to deal with them, one or in clusters as best as possible. In terms of the timing and, and intent to move forward, that's exactly why we're here, is to, is to start to identify all the factors that staff have raised, to see if committee through council has any other factors that we have not considered, so we can start moving this along and give you folks the information that's necessary to make the sort of considerations at hand. But one thing that you'll notice, I've changed the image. Presently, this is the public's invite, invited space down here, and it's, and it's been provided through the liberty of the developers over the course of time. They're maintaining the access route, they're maintaining the works down there, and I appreciate their, their invitation to the public insofar. Moving forward, the public will have more accessibility options, and I hope that we can deliver a successful project working with the development team through council.
Thank you, Brent, and we have a mammoth, too.
And we have a mammoth, that's correct.
So, I just want to hit the pause button for just a second. The one thing we glossed over here is the opportunity for any member of the public to step forward to address this item in our agenda here. If anyone wants to take a moment and step forward, now is the time. All right, back to committee then. Counselor Baxter, I had you next.
Couple of short remarks.
Why stays standing?
You're on the clock. I just want to reiterate something that Counselor Kobayashi said in response to that, that we have to get this right. So, and these things can take time. Now, the, and, and here, here on the issue of commercial, Doug, I totally agree with So just a, a big picture comment on traffic studies. This traffic study mentioned in the list of studies here only goes as far as VMP and, yep, that's the extent of it. And I just want to say that the developer doesn't necessarily have to look down the road from there, but the city and, and hopefully the province is looking down the road, because there's no point in us throwing traffic faster at a roadblock. If, if, you know, if the crawl is, is going to be back soon after McKenzie's open, then what are we delivering people there faster therefore? The concept in traffic engineering of a throttle is common, and it's to stop bigger and bigger traffic jams down the road, so we got to think about that. And on the issue of the erosion, I believe it said in here, yeah, that they've based their assessment on a worst-case scenario of two-meter sea level rise. In no real world is that the worst-case scenario, unless you attach a date to it, and there's no date, so we're not quite sure what it means. But I'm assuming that the date we're aimed at is 2100, in, in which case there are certainly experts in the area that will tell you that that is what we're going to get, and there are experts who'll tell you, we're not going to get that much by then. But, building on that, I know that everybody I've dealt with who, who looks at what the effect of sea level rise thinks about the life of the building that will be affected. Well, I don't care about the life of the building, and I don't think the city should. The city should care about the life of the lot. Nobody wants property created to be destroyed, and we can't get everything right about the future and climate change, but I like what you were saying about the slope of the land and, and, you know, what will change there. And I would hope, when we get this report, it will discuss what things can be done such as seawalls, if worst comes to worst, and it looks like the, the ground under those buildings on those lots might not hold, and therefore, you know, I mean, we're not going to go and build a seawall now, but in 50, 75 years, if, what are the options that are realistic? Conceptually only, obviously nobody's going to do a design at this stage or even a cost estimate, but none of us around this table are, are experts at holding back the sea, and I would hope that we would have an expert out there looking at this who could give us some idea of what can be done. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I take that? My name is Jim Hertz, and I forgot to say that. 2789 Guyton Way, G-U-Y-T-O-N. Sorry. Can I answer Counselor Baxter's question to the point of we understanding? So I think it's, we would understand, very similar comments have been made by the administrative environment, that the, the doc, the dictated sea rise, level rise is one meter for 100 years. We're going to two meters, which is for 200 years, virtually 200 years. And we're taking the scenario that, when we say the worst-case scenario, that is with no mediation, and I agree with what I heard just back, Mr. Baxter say, it's important to look at mediation. That's why we continue to study this. It's important to look at what this council might consider in the future, whether BC ferries were put in there with a breakwater, or many other things, but bear in mind, we don't own this land. This land is owned by the federal government. We do not own this land. We have no rights to these lands. Like, everyone must understand that. That land is owned by the federal government. We do not go down to the waterfront. The waterfront is owned by the federal government. We're in discussions with them, we want to cooperate with them, we want to do all sorts of things that will help us if this council, or a future council, looked at mediation. We'd have to get permission from the federal government to do so. Our property line is on the top of the bank, considerably far inside from the bank. So, whilst I really applaud your comment, Counselor, because I agree with you, we're going to two meters, which is 100% more than what's recommended by, by the province. We're staying away from that with no mediation considered, because we don't know what they could be or would be, and we don't own the land. So, I, I don't, if there's any other questions on that line, I'd like to have that out in front of council, because that's important to me. It's important to us to make sure everyone understands what our limitations or our liabilities
Response to that, because the province issued that one-meter rise, I think, in 2012, and they said it has to be revised five, five years from now. It hasn't been revised, and I've actually spoken to, you know, with others there, to one of the gentlemen that prepared that number, and it was his opinion that the number is now two meters. I'm not saying that's definitive, that's just his opinion, but that's what I mean about there are good opinions out there that it should be two meters by 2100. And, and I'm sure we can find you a worst-case scenario than that. Nobody really knows. But, but when I was talking about defending land, I'm not talking about defending land you don't own, or, or somebody won't own in the future. In a sense, I mean, the city is not interested in, in, in defending federal lands, but it is interested in whatever is built along the waterfront, or, or, you know, as near the waterfront as, as you go with building. It is interested in that property staying there and viable, and, and so we want to know how we would achieve that if, if there really was a worst-case scenario.
Mr. Chairman, may I further, sorry to do this, but I, I feel that I'd like to correct...
We could have this conversation offline.
Well, we could, but I think members of council should know our position on this, because it's, I think it's quite critical. We're only good as, as, as good as our consultants. We think we have the best consultant on the Pacific Coast, and I think that'd be recognized by most people. They're the consultants we're relying on, and so that's all we can do, and I think they have had numerous discussions with the ministry on whether it's one meter, two, two meters or what. So I don't, I can't respond to that, because I don't know what conversations you had, Counselor, but I accept and respect what you said. We're going to rely on NEC, and I, I hope that's what council does, because I don't know if anyone has more experience on the Pacific Coast than them. On the issue of, and I totally understand both Counselor Day and your comments, this company that, that's owns this property, no one's going to build housing, it's going to be dangerous. We've taken what we consider to be the two-meter rise elevation, which was being given to us by the ministry, is being passed what's, what's responsible now, and we're saying, if and when mediation happens, we'd be prepared to be involved with the municipality to do that on lands that we don't. But unfortunately, of course, you would know this better, Counselor, is that the lands in front are the, are the waters, are the lands that hit the water. The actual, whatever happens on the sea was going to happen on lands that we don't own, but will affect our land, and I think that's your point and my point, and I agree with you. We will be very responsible for that. That's just critically important to us as a developer, and, and to our knowledge, we, to my knowledge, no discussions have happened whatsoever, other than protecting that right. 200 years is a long time. I'm probably almost the oldest man in the room, it looks like. And so...
Don't get us started.
However, 200 years is a long time, and 100 years is a long time, but at the end of the day, what we're going to try to do, working with your staff, and we've enjoyed working with your staff, trying to get through the processes, and I, and I want to say this, we're working with four of the develop, or three of the developers, there's four developers trying their hardest to work with your staff to get the vision of the OCP, which was pretty clear in our particular area. Glad to hear the comments about, about non-residential density. That's important on this project, especially on the waterfront, but at the end of the day, we'll meet all the criteria that you give us and require, and what's reasonable. And on the issue of sea level rise, and, and, we call it foreshore abatement, all those things we need to go through, people that aren't your staff, they're federal and provincial ministries, we will bear those responsibilities, we will pay those responsibilities, but this council may have to make some decisions in the future about what happens on this foreshore, but in the meantime, we'll relate to two meters, and we don't know of any news whatsoever from our discussions with the ministry, and they have been extensive, that would change that. And when it does, those will be things that we'll be dealing with. Thank goodness for us, Counselor, we'll be working from the, from the chosen road south, or I guess east. We won't be working on the waterfront right away. We will come down La Torre and, and be working on that waterfront, but that is not affected as much by, by this issue. So I'm sorry to jump back in, but, but this is a really critical issue, and I think it's important for us. We're, we're the beach at Royal Bay. We're that 1.5 kilometers of beach that the public's going to get to use. We want to do it properly, as well as the people we sell and build our developments for. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hertz. Counselor Logan gets his first kick at the can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm, I'm actually quite heartened that Counselor Kobayashi's going to plan on sticking around for a little bit longer above grounds. I, thank you for that confirmation.
At least two terms.
Because I, I too want to be around when, when this moves forward as well. I do appreciate the work that staff and the applicant have done, and, and I see it's largely consistent with what our expectations are of Royal Bay with, with the three obvious exceptions because of their proximity to the, to the ocean. I guess my question, or, and probably my statement is more about expectations, about form of character, and, and the treatment and accessibility to the waterfront, and I was quite heartened to hear that perhaps some of the improvements will occur sooner in the... in the project than later in the project. And how we kind of mandate that through agreement will be important. But I guess through you, Mr. Chair, to staff is, when do we, when do we have those discussions in terms of what we want to see the waterfront look like? And what our expectation is in terms of treatment and future, perhaps, expansion along the rest of the waterfront, say, to the lagoon?
So I envision having the first preliminary discussions about those improvements to the frontage area, being the waterfront frontage area, as part of the geotechnical and the shoreline assessment, because they both directly relate into each other. Soft shores, hard shores, all of that relates into the erodible plane of that shoreline, as well as how it's going to erode. So where we set those features and what those features are for the longevity of those features has a direct relationship to the erodability of that coastline and that projected two-meter levels of sea level rise, whatever that number happens to be. In terms of the long-term scope of stretching from there, let's say, northward, all the way to the Colberg Peninsula, discussion's already underway, and administration will be planning to bring back a report about our parks place, to be speaking about not just the programmed and unprogrammed, but about some of the focused deliverables, natural space to program space, trail realities and connectabilities. And certainly, there's some high-level discussions right now about how we can do about bringing some vitality, especially for the alternate modes of transportation that are part of the discussions we're having with the developer, but as well as along the shoreline as well. So that's, I see, as stitching forward as part of this project, and then part of what administration needs to bring in the next six months forward for committees and councils' consideration.
Great. Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, just another question, specifically regarding the traffic impact and the work that's going on. And right now, the three or four developers are kind of slow dancing together. And when does that slow dance end? And there's a proposal that takes place so we can actually understand what the long-term plan is for Latoya Road and the VMP.
Through the chair, I would say, to use the same terminology, that the slow dance ends when we come forward and express council's vision as to how that corridors will work. It will address Counselor Baxter's questions about the bottleneck and where it goes, and how fast we want to move traffic through. All that will come consideration. It's frankly one of the first considerations that'll come to bear, that'll tie both these projects together. The slow dance will continue through once we realize those, what the value or level of those improvements are, because they will be attributed to the density factor or a trigger of timing, as we heard one of the developer's agents speak to about a development cost charge program for implementation and timing. You've also heard the developer speak to offering it right off the gate. And that'll be something that we work through in terms of the development agreement that will have to be stitched together in terms of all of the activity in the area. The one outstanding piece that we have heard mentioned is the developer that's off-site. The Olympic View Development or the Latoya Walk Development, for example, are not part of the implications that are part of the Gable Craft and Sea Cliff, however, form an intricate part of the picture. They're waiting for those same considerations as well, if I might say so.
Thank you.
It's the extended version of Stairway to Heaven. Anybody else? Counselor Parkinson?
Yeah. First, I think I'd like to pass kudos on to the developer for accepting the two-meter sea level rise. I think that number has a direct impact on their developmental lands and what they could and couldn't do. And I think they've stepped up to the plate and made what I would consider to be a very reasonable and appropriate assumption in working from there. Saves a lot of discussions and push and pull. So if, at some future date, it turns out two meters wasn't the right number, it was two and a half or three, or who knows what, I would suspect that the remediation will take place at the top of the bank and not the bottom of the bank, and so it won't be shoreline-related. But let's wait and see what the smart shoreline people say on that. Just a couple of things on going through the studies, and, you know, I support the concept of having the studies and mirroring what's going on at Royal Bay. And perhaps that's as far as these studies should go. But just a couple of perhaps specific things to the Royal Beach that I believe have to be addressed at some point. And that's when you look at the traffic. I think even the traffic within the Royal Beach development itself might be significant. There's not a lot of outlet points, if you like, to the Chosen Road. There's certainly a consideration of a significant amount of activity and development down there. So that's got to be understood before things go too much further. This is a hobby horse of mine that I'm going to throw out again. On the infrastructure side of things, I think that I would like to have a long, hard look at a lift station at the serving Royal Beach that eliminates the current lift station on the Chosen Road. I think that's a possibility. Could even be some cost savings by relocating some of the equipment out of that existing lift station. So, you know, I'm not smart enough to do all that work myself, but Jim says he's hired the best consultants, so see if they can solve it. Maybe they can't. But it would be a huge benefit to the city to have one major lift station instead of two major lift stations over the long haul. There's talk in here about looking at what the absorption rates would be on the non-residential. I think that's very critical and interesting. I would suggest it might be also worthwhile to look at the absorption rates on the residential if the numbers are looked at. You know, living as I do in the Aquatro Ocean Grove Two Waters Development, the absorption rates there would make for a very long build-out at Royal Beach, the numbers they have. So, you know, some, I think, it would be interesting to council to know whether we're talking, you know, decades or centuries to complete this project. And another one, again, this is really probably way outside what we're talking about tonight, but we have heard from the residents about how excited they would be to have a string of restaurants, you know, along the beach to look out at the water and do like that. And we all would be. I wonder about the economics of that, unfortunately. So I don't know if that's part of their absorption work, but it might be something that would, you know, if there was a consideration or an analysis done to say, you know, we can't do much in the way of restaurants until there's a thousand units or whatever, it would be useful to the residents that are anxious and desirous of that kind of amenity. And the ferry, I think perhaps all we could ask is that they would, Royal Beach would look and maybe perhaps give a guideline on when they need to know if the ferry's going to happen or not, so they can work their plans around it. And, you know, it would be a number of years, I understand. That's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Counselor Logan. Seeing nobody else, Counselor Day?
Thanks. As I was just sitting here thinking about the number of studies that are going to be required, it jumped into my head that one of the things that isn't mentioned on this list is anything about the remediation of the settling pond that's in the Royal Bay Beach portion of the development. It looks like a stand of alder trees right now, but I have seen deer caught in those settling ponds, and they did not survive it. It's kind of quicksand that seems to be bottomless. And if there was sufficient erosion such that those settling ponds escaped into the ocean where the eelgrass beds lie just outside of there, that could have some very devastating impacts on our ocean natural systems. And we're all a little concerned about our killer whales and our salmon runs, and the eelgrass beds are the foundation for that. Will there be some consideration of how to remediate those settling ponds?
Mr. Chairman, taking the chance again to answer Counselor Day's question, and maybe some other questions that I heard and took notes of. Very good question. Thank you. We've had the consultant on this site for, help me, Stuart, 30 years, 25 years. Thurber's on this consulting for this many, many, many years. And the CFC is very specific, Certificate of Compliance is very specific, is completely acceptable to the ministry. And their monitoring of that is what we have to continue doing, as we always will. But the CFC is complete, and it's for residential standard. So there's no issue, other than doing whatever monitoring and under the construction process that was covered by your staff. Anytime a building permit, development permit would be approved, those processes would be reiterated and confirmed again as you do a development. So that continuing control, if you want to use that term, is put on by the consultant, which is Thurber. Is there any reason to think, did I answer the question acceptable to you? If not, I have more things to say.
Well, as far as I'm aware, Thurber hasn't been involved for quite a while.
No, no, they're involved with, they're a consultant.
Your microphone. Counselor Parkinson?
Yeah, I don't think there's anybody knows those ponds better than Thurber. But you talk about a CFC, which I understand as being an environmental concern, and there may well be environmental issues with the tailings ponds. My concern would be more on the, how do you build on them? How do you deal with differential settlements as you build partially on them and run services through the burms around them and that kind of stuff? So, you know, not insurmountable, as long as you've got people looking at it, I'll wait for their answers.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just impressed with this council that have so much interest in detail, because my other councils, other councils that I work in, and there's by the hundreds of them, have not had that detail, usually work with staff. So the consultants are fully apprised for 30-some years of the environmental issues on this property, and will not sign off on anything that's not confirmed by both your staff and the environmental branch. There's no question whatsoever, they can be built on, can be dealt with. And the question that Counselor brought up, Counselor Day brought up, which I think is a really good one, is how and what do we protect every issue that relates to anything towards, we'll call it the sealand, if you will. And I think that was really your question. And I think it's a good question. I like the question, because those are my questions. And so to answer the engineer question, is that's completely acceptable to us to take those responsibilities, termarys take them on, and we're completely satisfied. And on the issue of the waterfront erosion and/or anything that happens with contamination, again, under control, and any mediation needs to be done, they will satisfy your staff to provide that. No questions whatsoever. But while I'm up, Mr. Chairman, there was a couple of other questions that were brought up by different councils, not put, they were put as statements as opposed to questions. I take them as questions. It's my chance to speak to your council. And on traffic inside the Royal Beach, I think it's a good point. And those are things that we'll be doing. But traffic, transit, whether a ferry comes or goes, all those issues, and whether retail is built and when it is built at Royal Bay, like, all those things mitigate and make it easier for people to get around in their transit situation. What is the public going to take this as a retirement community, a working community, a school community, a hotel community? All those things are part of transit and part of transportation, and we're comfortable that we can put those on the site and make it work. I think it's a good point, because we are limited by access. But we're designing that access to the extent that we are to make that work. I'm excited about the lift station. You have a very good one, which my consultant's telling me tomorrow that is, needs to be repaired or improved, and we'll be doing that. We've had a discussion about a lower lift station, because it's issues that relate to that that make the infrastructure work or don't work. And we have a very significant elevation challenge between, these two engineers would know more about this than anybody else in the room, including me. But we will be looking at, and don't know what will happen, but it'd be something that we'll work with the engineering department on. The absorption rate on the non-residential. There has been a bit of discussion with your staff in regards to what the OCP says and what our density is, and what might be a study that was done by another community, another consultant for your staff, not from Victoria, but from Vancouver. And what was intriguing by that is that they made a recommendation that said retail won't happen in Callwood, it'll go to Langford. Well, I totally disagree with that assumption. I totally agree with you with that finding. And non-residential density in, we'll call it, our part of it, the Royal Beach, is so important to us. That's zoned for that. We want that to be the hub. We want the retail to be at Royal Bay where it should be. It seems to me it's a perfect location. But everything that relates to a ferry or transportation or future development on that site, non-residential, should be in the landing. Your OCP says it should be 1.75 to 3.5. That's 6 million square feet to 9 million square feet. We're only talking about less than 0.75 density. I think that's very small. The vision that this council in the past has had, it should be bigger. We're accepting the numbers that we're proposing, but I think it's important to look at the absorption. Do you know how many single-family homes you build in Callwood in the last five years, your average? Less than 100. Multifamily, less than 100. Like, it's a very fair question. So if we don't get the density, we don't get the absorption, we don't get the other things that are non-residential, we can't make the society that we want to put down there be what it is, in my opinion. And then the bars and restaurants, we want to provide and work with your staff, and they're not able to speak to you about this, but at this stage, we want to provide the new road right down to the beach, properly built, designed, and paved and created. We want to create the beach park. We want to build the park, way ahead of 1,000 doors or 500 doors. We want to do it now, because the public, on the three public meetings we've had, and another one coming up, the big, well over 50% of the comments are, why aren't you building this thing? Why aren't you proceeding? Why aren't you going forward? So 20 years of the public thinking that we're going to get going, I hope is coming to fruition. And to pick up your point, building on the waterfront, putting the park access, working with your parks department, to pick the right process, I think staff are going to have some, I hope some input into that, give us some direction. We want to build that sooner than later. We want to build it right away, as a matter of fact, and give it to the city as part of the reasons why they should be doing this development. It's frankly the biggest piece of waterfront you have in your community, in my opinion, from what I understand. And in the last place, we, thank you for the question, we are building the ferry plan, whether it's in or out. It's designed to be in, and if it's out, it'll be designed to be other parking. But we're excited about that option. It's not ours, it's not our proposal, we're just going to facilitate it, but it could be huge for this plan. I'm sorry, unashamedly picked up some questions, given to others, and answered them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hertzorn. So if there's nothing else from the table, I'd like to move on. And there's no recommendation or anything required. That's for information only. Moving along to 6.3 climate emergency response. Mr. Borghil.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, your worship and committee members. Thank you for this opportunity to present staff's proposed response to the city's declaration of a climate emergency. As you know, we are here because council declared a climate emergency on May 27th of this year, and directed staff to prepare a follow-up report with options for accelerated action and taking near-term steps to address climate change. Tonight, I'll therefore focus on the recommended actions contained in the report, and I'll leave as much time as possible for questions. First off, to clarify the context, staff note that the climate emergency declaration is an acknowledgement of the urgency needed to avoid catastrophic climate change. It has not been interpreted as a declaration of local state of emergency, which is intended to invoke the Emergency Program Act and allow for emergency powers to deal with imminent events or circumstances. Secondly, I'd like to acknowledge that significant work has been carried out to date in the area of climate action at the city. This includes ratification of the climate charter in 2007, a compilation of a draft Community Energy and Emissions Plan in 2008, implementation of solar Callwood program between 2011 and 2005, that saw major incentives for solar and energy efficiency projects provided to residents throughout Callwood and later the region, and recent projects in areas of climate adaptation and emissions reduction, as outlined in the staff report. One of these current projects is the city's collaboration with Simon Fraser University through the Integrated Climate Action in B.C. initiative, also known by the acronym ICA ICA BIKI is an initiative intended to assist municipalities in the strategic alignment of climate adaptation and emissions reduction. The term low-carbon resiliency has been coined to describe this comprehensive approach to climate action. So essentially, we're trying to look at adaptation actions and mitigation actions at the same time to find synergies and avoid unintended consequences. I'm really happy to report that the city has been selected to be one of the initial first-wave case communities, along with several other local governments in B.C., just found out last week. So I'll start off by outlining the guiding principles that staff are advocating, along with application of the LCR approach. Firstly, that measures, mitigation measures should focus on actions with the lowest ratio of cost to emission. of cost to emissions reduction. Secondly, that measures that have co-benefits in other areas should be prioritized. Thirdly, that alignment with the province's Clean BC Plan for Climate Action should be sought. Fourth, that actions should be equitable, in that they should not disproportionately affect middle and low-income households in Callwood. And lastly, that mitigation efforts should be focused on actions in Callwood as much as possible. Example of that are the solar Callwood incentives for energy efficiency. Staff are therefore asking committee for feedback on these proposed guiding principles as part of your consideration of the report's recommendations. Based on council's May 27th direction, staff have separated emergency response into two areas. Firstly, six immediate accelerated actions that propose near-term responses to the climate emergency. These immediate actions include a series of steps the city could take very quickly to improve how staff and council operationalize climate action. They include the hosting of public forums on climate change and the community's response. Secondly, incorporation of climate implications in, excuse me, incorporation of a new climate implication section in staff reports. Thirdly, the establishment of Climate Action Reserve Fund to finance climate action efforts within the city. Fourthly, that staff be directed to assist residents wherever possible in accessing incentives to improve energy efficiency. I'm renovating a house in Callwood right now, and I can tell you that could be very useful. Fifth, that climate action be prioritized in current planning projects. And lastly, that the city considers coordination with other local governments through the 2019 UBCM Convention on Climate Action Resolutions. Next, I'll go over three main accelerated actions that are proposed as near-term efforts over the next two years to address the climate change emergency. First, that council budget for a comprehensive low-carbon resiliency plan project to be undertaken in the next year, that would combine what the OCP has called for already, which is an update to our Community Energy Emissions Plan and an adaptation plan that is underway through ICA Canada. And secondly, that staff be directed to provide a report to council that outlines the adoption of the BC Energy Step Code before the end of 2019. So that's providing the report by the end of the year and implementing over the next two years. And thirdly, that staff notify the province that the city is undertaking public consultation as a first step towards adoption of the Step Code. And lastly, because the Step Code focuses on energy efficiency, staff are advocating the investigation of potential incentives for low-carbon energy systems to complement the adoption of the Step Code. Had to get the mammoth in here. So lastly, I conclude, this concludes my introduction of the staff report, and I welcome any questions and comments the committee or public in attendance tonight may have.
Thank you, Mr. Borghil. Perhaps first we'll seek some public input, Ian, if you just give us a minute. I'd like to invite members of the public to step forward if you have something to say on this particular item.
Judge Johnson, you're looking at me like I should be saying something. Judith Collington, 3338, A.C. Actually, I wasn't going to say anything. I will simply say, thank you for declaring an emergency. It is an emergency. I look forward to all of the good ideas you're going to come up with, those in the staff report, and others that you may wish to take.
Thanks, Judith. Anybody else? And back to council. Your worship.
Thank you. I just have a quick question, and I'm glad Lance stayed as well. Can you, can you answer the question? You know, we keep talking about Step Code, but I also know that the BC residential homeowners, or the Greater Victoria BC homeowners, is not supportive of the Step Code? And so how does that fit in to that, when you have the major? The Victoria Real Estate Builders Association has said that they don't believe the Step Code is fair, because as you get into more colder climates, for example, even as you move up into Nanaimo and so on, that it ends up, it's an additional burden onto local builders, that builders do not experience as you go north.
Through the chair, thank you, your worship, for the question. Council, I think, is aware that Callwood is very lucky to have a builder community that takes sustainability very seriously, and we have been working with the development community to, as much as possible, learn what the ramifications of implementation of the Step Code could be. So I know that the Building Inspections Department has been actively soliciting input, and feel that, at this stage, given the maturity of the builders' understanding of the Step Code and the ways in which cost-effective measures can be applied, that there wouldn't be a significant disruption to the builders' community or affordability through a measured implementation of Steps 2 and 3 of the Step Code.
May I do a follow-up? Just as a quick follow-up, I understand that perhaps staff don't believe that, but that's not what's being messaged to me by the association. So, I think we're just going to need to just further investigate that and make sure that the association is also on board as we continue to implement these Step Codes.
Counselor Day.
Thank you. Really appreciate the report, and I just thought I'd jump in at this particular moment in time, because I did attend a Step Code orientation and education session with the CRD last term. And we were there with a number of builders, a number of council people, it was a pretty mixed bag, and part of the day-long learning that we did included doing some tours with local builders who were working under the Step Code. It included a large commercial development on Douglas and I think it's Fiskard, no, it's the next one down. Anyways, very close to Victoria City Hall, who very proudly showed us what they were doing with the Step Code, and also the passive home builders who were working both in James Bay and on Wilson Street, where we had a number of tours, both a completed home and also a home that was at about the halfway stage. And I was reminded of that when I toured Royal Bay homes, and they were talking about which parts of the Step Code they were already embracing. I think that part of the problem is, all of us are a little resistant to changes, and certainly builders are no different, especially with them having some fears that their bottom line is going to be impacted. But what I heard from the developers who had embraced the changes, was that many of the steps that they were taking, once they had done them once or twice, it was actually a very much improved product that they were getting, and they were finding even some cost savings from doing it, because, for example, the passive home builders talked about the envelope, you know, they want to make their buildings as airtight as possible, and so they, they found that the biggest change for them was doing a blower door test halfway through the build, so that they were identifying where their envelope was vulnerable before it was all completely finished up and hidden, so they could actually address some of those issues. So, it was, it was really a learning curve, and there was a number of, you know, people from all points of view in attendance, but what I heard from a lot of the developers was that it was really leading them towards a better product and more availability of the products that they needed to do the job that they do. So, I think that was very positive, and certainly I've seen very positive comments. It's like everything, I think there is a real learning curve, and I think sometimes we're so busy doing what we've always done, that we don't want to do things differently. So, I think I'm on the same curve myself, trying to find ways to do this. I love that we are going to talk with our community with this plan, to talk about what we each can do to improve our homes and make them more efficient. Solar Callwood was a hugely positive investment of staff time. We, when we were working at local events, we had many people from other municipalities reach out to us and say, gosh, I'm in Langford or Souk or View Royal or anywhere else at that point in time, and I wish that my community was doing what you're doing. I think this has a real possibility to have that very positive spin-off of creating opportunities for both our developers and our citizens to meet and talk about what we're going to do about this climate emergency. You can't watch the news and not hear about what's burning and what's flooding, and our kids are very concerned about their futures, and I think it's a very positive step to have something positive that we can all be doing, each of us finding what we can do to make a difference. So, I'm very supportive of us taking the actions outlined in the report, and I think that at least several developers that I have spoken to were very positive about the Step Code, and in fact, said that, Royal Bay, when we talked to them, they said they were already equivalent to Step 3. So, to keep that push going and get other developers to be likewise-minded, I think, is a reasonable expectation.
Thank you, Counselor Day. Counselor Baxter.
I remember years ago, when the Housing Construction Association complained that the industry was going to be destroyed by the introduction of smoke alarms in houses. That's their job, it's their job to try and protect their members' bottom line, and we have to listen to them, but we should listen with a critical ear. And there's another constituency here that never gets discussed in this issue, and that is, the people who live in the houses and have to pay the energy bills. And as I've said before around this table, the most certain way that you can make a house more affordable is to lower the energy bills. I mean, if you think about what your average energy bills are per year, and compare it to your mortgage, your mortgage is bigger. But having a really inefficient home is going to increase your energy bills substantially. Having a really efficient home, something like Step Code 3, is going to bring your energy bills down to where it'll be an unbelievably small amount of money you have to pay. And that's going to help you meet your mortgage, or your rent, or whatever it is. So, I think we need to remember the two constituencies. One of them, the builders, are right now, and they haven't always, but right now, they're making a lot of money. And I know it's a risky business, and you've got to make that money, because you've got to put it aside, because you won't always have a, it won't always be a boom market. But the renters or the buyers at the low end need the help of lower energy bills. Turning to the report, I think it's a great report, and all I can do is add just some small ideas for short-term things that you might be able to also think about, such as requiring electric chargers in multifamily rezonings, and perhaps in providing DCC incentives for building on bus routes. As a newly dedicated biker, I would say that something that would really help people, and I've heard this complaint from others, and in fact, there was a woman stood at that podium, and it was very clear from what she said, that she needed a map of Callwood that showed the little biking shortcuts that people like me learn over the years, that she doesn't know about, and it takes you a while, somebody has to tell you about these little things, like the right-of-way that goes through the cemetery, which can cut miles off your bike ride, or the deak through Royal Roads to the Galloping Goose, and then from the Galloping Goose on to Callwood Crescent. There's a little mud trail there that works just fine on a bike when it's not too wet. So, a record of all of those would really help people. And encouragement to ride-share is something we can do, and I know the CIO has some experience with that. And that's all I got. But thank you for that report, and I was pleased to see it arrive in such a timely fashion.
Counselor Kobayashi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Yes, Ian, this was actually a really good report that you put together. Now, I'm going to be a bit pragmatic here, I have to be. We had this thing called a strategic planning session, and I'd like to remind all the council here that we all agreed on four priorities. Unfortunately, this was not one of them. I don't know why, I think, I think the discussion surrounded the OCP, and what we felt was laid out in the OCP was sufficient. Okay, so that's point number one. The second point, and I want to make very clear too, is that I have my training sheets that we were given, and the big thing that I want to understand is, it always comes down to funding and resources. And it was made very clear when we had our municipal training as mayors and councillors, that this was not to come from our funding municipally, it was a provincial/federal funding responsibility. It's very clear. And I mean, I took notes, because I'm a bit anal about this kind of thing. And so, the third thing is that we have this recommendation, and I'm all, you know, the guiding principles, they're great to me and all that, but there's a cost to this right now. And I want to understand what that cost is. We have to go in there with our eyes wide open, ladies and gentlemen. I honestly, I feel very passionate about this, and we're going to do this, let's do it right, let's concentrate our forces on, you know, what we should be doing. You know, this generic, we're going to just throw resources, like, I was very surprised to get this report, to tell you the truth, because I don't recall us asking for it, and we still don't have strategic priorities in what we're going to do under our strategies. So, I guess the points, this is why I won't support this, just based on the principle, you come back and give me the full picture, the full picture. I want, I want the, I want the financial budget that goes with this, the resources that goes with this, and then, sure, we'll make that decision at that time. But until that comes, it's like writing a blank check. So I just want to say this comment right now to ladies and gentlemen, that this is how I feel about it, and it's not that I'm against it, I'm for it, but I do want to see a concentration of force, and this generic stuff is, it's all great, and we look good in the press, but let's get something done. And I've always said that, let's get something done, we can just eat this big elephant one piece at a time. So, I just want to make that reminder. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to comment, I know we've had a lot of discussion about how perhaps those homes built to the Step Code have lower operating costs, which is certainly true, and, but it's the, it's the capital costs sometimes, that is the issue with young families trying to get into the market, and so while the operating costs may offset, sometimes the capital cost is, you know, what the lenders are looking at, and so I don't want to lose sight of that, although the operating costs will make up some of the, some of the additional mortgage costs, the banks don't always look at that, but, and that's some of the impact. But, and that's some of the impact, that's some of the feedback that I've received over the last couple of years is that's the biggest stumbling blocks, the capital cost. Just a couple of questions on this report, I guess, and comments through you to Ian. Under the public forums, I guess my suggestion is instead of having a forum kind of in a gym or in City Hall where you get the usual people coming. I think we need to get out to the people, to the moms and dads who don't have time to come here. But perhaps if we went to the park and got the message out there. Or even partnered with the schools, because it's really, you know, my grumpy old fart to the father who's 82 is still bitter that he can't burn, and so he's not really Karen. Whereas my kids will be impacted and have probably more of a stake in how they conduct themselves into the future than my dad does. So, you know, I just put that out there as a suggestion. And another question, I guess, is under B in the immediate accelerated actions, it says incorporate climate implication section in reports, providing assessment of the potential impacts that major decisions could have on GHG emissions and community resiliency. If you read further down in the report, it mentions things like infrastructure projects. So I'm trying to rationalize why and how much staff time would be taken if council and the city decided to build three kilometers of sidewalk. That would be a benefit, I think, to the community. Why, how much staff time it would take to calculate the impact on GHGs as a result of that good infrastructure project? And how that could delay any kind of project. I'm just looking at how to operationalize some of this stuff and the impacts that will have on some of our decision-making and perhaps a possible delay in rolling out some of the good stuff.
Mr. Chair, staff share that same concern that adding this section and approaching it with too much rigor off the hop could be a problem. So on page five of the staff report, when we discuss in more detail what we're proposing, we're suggesting that we initially start with a qualitative, a general analysis of impacts that reflects current competencies within City Hall. As we move forward, we're suggesting that terms of reference for this report be modified so that we're using off-the-shelf approaches and information to refine the information that we're providing with respect to climate implications. So the hope is that we initially take baby steps and then move towards a more comprehensive approach.
Mayor Martin.
I was expecting, actually, I beat Counselor Baxter. It worked out. So I'm not suggesting at all that I'm supportive of getting rid of step code by any means. I just was making a point to try and say that there are two schools of thought out there right now. And I just wanted to read one sentence. This is actually from the Victoria Home Builders Association, and this is Casey Edge speaking. "The BC government's estimates are too low. The government says a tier-five passive home is only $17,450 more to build. Our surveys of the Built Green Passive Home builders indicate costs of between $55,000 and $110,000. Step code has no certification education programs. Built Green Passive Home programs have certified education to avoid unintended consequences like leaky condos." So all I'm suggesting is that there are several schools of thought and individuals out there who are presenting different ways to approach the same environmental issues. And that I'm suggesting to staff, we need to be very careful that we just don't accept one single principle because that's the principle of today. And that we need to make sure that we're surveying out those people who are actually building out into our community and what they're supportive of. Outside of that, I'm very content and very happy with the report, and I will limit my comments to that.
Counselor Baxter.
I just want to set my colleagues across the way there. Set your minds at ease. Every builder sells his houses at the highest number the market will bear. He may not be completely accurate on that, but that's his intent. Sell it at the highest number the market will bear. It is therefore impossible for the step code to increase the cost to the buyer because you can't sell it at more than the market will bear because the market won't bear it. What it is possible to do is for the builder to make less money. And we mustn't forget about that. But to switch to the number that Worship gave us from Mr. Edge, I don't think Casey Edge has ever built a passive house. I'm pretty chafed in saying that. Whereas if you talk to people who have, in Victoria, built passive houses, they will tell you that it's between 3% and 7%, depending on the building. And the lower figure you quoted is about 3%. If the BC government is saying that it's always 3%, then I would agree that they're wrong. But it is, according to people who've built them, it is not usually or is rarely over 7%, which would be, say, two and a half times the number you quoted.
Counselor Parkinson.
I'm confused. Is this report mandating going to step code? Or is it just one of the options that we're exploring?
Through the chair, what staff is proposing are two steps with relation to the step code. One is for staff to prepare a report that outlines all of the requirements to move towards implementation of step two and three of the step code. So that would give council a chance to look at this in more detail and give final determination on how we should proceed. The second step would be to initiate the process by letting the province know that we are doing consultations. So as I mentioned, staff have been undertaking consultation with the builder community. And this is a statutory required step towards implementation that we notify the province as such.
Sounds eminently reasonable to me.
Thank you. There is a recommendation from, put forward by staff here? Any movers? It's not a receive. Right. So you're moving it in its entirety? Thank you. I guess I'm going to have to suck it up and read this out. "That the committee received a report titled 'Climate Action Response' dated September 3, 2019. That it be recommended to council that the guiding principles for the climate emergency response be endorsed as follows. In addition to using low-carbon resilience approach to compile action items, the following principles be used to guide the initial response to the climate emergency. A. Given the limited nature of the city resources and the imperative to reduce emissions, mitigation measures should focus on actions with the lowest ratio of cost to greenhouse gas emissions reductions. B. Measures that have co-benefits in other areas should be prioritized. C. Alignment with the province's Clean BC Plan for Climate Action should be sought. D. Actions shall be equitable in that they should not disproportionately impact middle and lower-income households. And E. Mitigation efforts should be focused on action in Callwood as much as possible. Immediate accelerated actions. A. Host public forums on climate action and the community's response by the way of two-way learning opportunities. B. Incorporate climate implication section in reports, providing assessment of the potential impacts that major decisions could have on greenhouse gas emissions and community resiliency. C. Establish a climate action reserve fund be established to dedicate funds to mitigation and adaptation efforts. D. Help residents access initiatives to improve the energy efficiency of their homes. E. Prioritize climate action in current planning projects by finding ways in which these plans can help reduce greenhouse gas emissions and increase resiliency. And F. Coordinate with other local governments through the 2019 Union of BC Municipalities Convention Climate Action Resolutions. Near-term accelerated actions. A. Include the cost of developing a low-carbon resiliency plan addressing climate mitigation and adaptation in the 2020 financial plan for council's consideration. B. Provide a report to council that fully outlines the adoption process, additional consultation and proposed timelines of the BC Energy Step Code before the end of 2019. Notify the province that the city is undertaking public consultation on the BC Energy Step Code implementation and investigate potential incentives for low-carbon energy systems to complement adoption of the step code." No. Jesus. That is the recommended motion. Thank you, Worship. Discussion, Counselor Baxter.
I just want to clarify, I think it's clear from that motion that this is not a license to spend any new money whatsoever. But it is an instruction to bring forward costs for 2020 budget, which we may or may not accept.
Counselor Kobayashi.
So is that your modification, then? Because that's not how I understand this. Because it's, you know, setting up reserve funds. We, in essence, indirectly, I'm just going to warn you right here, is that you are actually hiring more bodies to me. Because there is no estimate here. Like, what is the cost in terms of the man-hours? Is this, like, going to take two more bodies? Like, let's just be open. That's all I'm saying right now. And if it's the will of council, then let it be. But you can't just, to me, this is a blank check. And then the justification is, well, you guys passed it. Like, look at here. That's how I would read it that way right now. But if we want to put some caveats in this, I would change the way, I don't like how it reads right now.
Counselor Day.
Thank you. As I read it, we are looking at including costs for developing that fund in 2020. So that is bringing forward the proposal. We're going to approve it or not at the time. And earlier, when I was reading the report, I did read in there utilizing existing staff. So not new hires, just giving permission for the staff that we have to do that outreach about climate change. So at least that's my understanding.
Anyone else before we go back to Counselor Baxter?
Ask the CIO to clarify that this will not be interpreted as a license to spend any new money.
From administration's perspective, if this resolution were to pass as it is today, we have no additional authorities. There's no specific budget amendments. Staff would endeavor to proceed with this direction with the existing budgets.
Thank you for that clarification. I'd like to call the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Did you get that, Amanda? Counselor Kobayashi, opposed. And next meeting is September the 16th, 2019. And I need a motion to adjourn. Sorry, there isn't final public participation.
Move adjournment.
Thank you so much, Counselor Baxter. All those in favor of adjourning?